We'll call the meeting to a halt. Please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank our town council members Julie Clay and John Kopeck for being here tonight. Welcome back Olivia Whitehead, our previous student representative, and I'd like to introduce our new Journal Enquirer reporter. It's Eric Bedner. Thank you very much for joining us. And now we will start with the long-awaited bat presentation. We're sorry we've put you off so many times.
Good evening. Tonight I'm here with Amy Violet, one of our math interventionists. She serves students at Maple Street in Northeast School. We have Amanda Warner, our grade-three teacher at Northeast School. And we also have our curriculum specialist over this chair. Yes, this is much anticipated. We've been snowed out, I think, two or three times, so we're excited tonight. Really, our goal is really to give you an overview of Eureka Math. We'll hopefully be able to answer some of your questions tonight. Also, we have a number of resources available on our website for video clips, other resources for teachers, for parents. So hopefully, if you can't get your answer questions this evening, you'll be able to look on for future reference on our website. To get you started, we're going to start with just a brief overview of standards. And we have a short video clip to show you, so you can direct your attention to the screen.
Education is the great equalizer. It's the opportunity to get better. Every high school graduate should come out of school ready for college, ready for a career, not just ready to go, but ready to succeed.
All we can do to raise the standards and expectations of our children and their horizons and the preparation for life should...
Everybody's kind of clearly sees the connection between education achievement and economics. We led the world in education for a long time. That's really not so true anymore. The future of this country's economy is based on innovation, technology, mathematics. Every country is trying to figure out how to be competitive. Our competitors are a lot better than they used to be. Higher standards, higher expectation, higher results, higher academic achievement. Education is the most important asset we have for competing in the 21st century. It's essential.
With that short video clip, that brings us to Eureka Math. I just want to share a few slides with you regarding past math instruction versus Connecticut Core Standard Math Instruction. In the past, our focus really was on basic skills. Now, students are more focused on problem solving. The next slide there, you can see, in the past, we were really teacher-driven. Now, our classrooms are more student-centered, student-driven, where students are really taking an active role in the learning process. In the past, we were teaching really repetitive calculations. Now, it's about application of learning. So students are learning skills in the classroom, and we're asking them to apply their learning to solve problems. In the past, it was about coverage. Many standards were taught at grade levels. The Common Core really helps us focus on fewer standards, critical areas in each grade level. There's a coherence of skills building from grade level to grade level and progression throughout the year. So our teachers are focusing on less standards at a deeper level, deeper level of understanding. As I said, in the past, we've really focused on separate chunks. Now, it's about coherence. Past math instruction really focused on answer-getting. The way we learned a lot of the questions that came up this year, to be honest with Eureka Math, was I didn't learn math that way. Personally, I didn't learn math that way either. And it's been a big shift away from just answer-getting to really looking at those three major shifts for RIGER, one being conceptual understanding. We're teaching our students to really have a basis, a conceptual understanding of concepts, before moving to the algorithm. Now, we're really used to just teaching that shortcut. So it's been kind of a shift for teachers and students this year. And at the end of the presentation, I'll have, throughout the presentation at the end, some success stories that we've had already that our students have experienced and families have experienced. That's a huge shift for us. The second shift really in RIGER is that procedural skill and fluency comes after that conceptual understanding. And number three, I think I mentioned earlier, application of mathematics. It's not just about answer-getting, getting the correct answer. It's about applying the skills and being able to explain their thinking, which again is a big shift from previous math instruction. The next slide really focuses on Eureka, which is really a curriculum resource. It's one of our primary resources this year. It's also served as a professional development platform. Our students are actually, our teachers, meet in grade-level teams. They plan lessons together. Just reading through the lessons is professional learning for our teachers. It's been the best way of job-embedded professional learning for them this year. The program itself is really not meant to be prescriptive. It's offered as a resource for teachers. Teachers shape the classroom experience. As they get more comfortable with the units and the lessons, that's when they really make it their own. And we've started, we've seen that shift from the beginning of the year, where teachers were really tied to each lesson and each component strictly. Now, they're starting to make the decisions in the classrooms based on what their students' needs are, and they're feeling more confident with the program. It does follow the focus and coherence of the Connecticut Standards. We looked at other, in looking at Eureka, it really is built from the ground up with the Common Core Standards in mind. Again, the progressions, each unit and module builds on it. So not only from grade level to grade level, but within the grade band, the progressions are built, instruction models are built on each other. And really, the research from Eureka Math came from the state of New York, the Education Department. We do have a link on the Connecticut State Department of Education, which recommends this as a viable resource for students, for districts. It was put together by a review team of mathematicians and authors of the Common Core State Standards. So it is a research base vested on what's best and included in the Common Core State Next, we have another short video clip we put together just to give you kind of an overview of Eureka Math, then we'll get into each component of the lessons. That was just an overview of Eureka Math. You got to see just a short glimpse of what students are involved in each day. There are four major components to the program: fluency, application problems, the concept development, and then student debrief. I'm going to pass it over to Amy Violet, who's going to talk to you a little bit about fluency practice.
Fluency practice in this program is much more than giving students their math facts and having them memorize it. There are a variety of different fluency practices in this program. One of the types is called a sprint, which I'm going to quickly show you in a short video, and then I will explain what a sprint looks like and is. So what a sprint is, is it's a minute paper and pencil fact fluency practice, where students are focusing on a certain skill. For example, it might be the skill of adding five. So as students go through the sprint, the problems get progressively harder as you go down the page on the sprints. What we just saw here was the teacher correcting a sprint with the class. What happens is the teacher gives the answer. If the students get the correct answer, they usually respond with a yes or some kind of cheer that the classroom comes up with. If the student did not get the correct answer or was not able to get that far in the sprint, the student is quiet. So it is an easy way for the teacher to see exactly where his or her classmates, or his or her students, finished the sprint. Then, students look over the sprint to see if they notice any patterns, and they are given another sprint that same day. And the goal of that second sprint is to get one more correct than they did on the first sprint for the day. And we celebrate if and however many students received at least one more correct than they did on the first sprint. As I've been in a variety of classrooms, I would say on average, all students are getting at least one more correct on the next sprint, and they feel very good about themselves afterwards. There is a different type of sprint that I'm going to, or a different type of fluency, excuse me, that I'm going to show you here, and then I'll explain what that fluency looks like.
Here we go.
Ninety. Hundred. Hundred ten. Hundred twenty. Hundred thirty. Hundred forty. Hundred thirty. Hundred twenty. Hundred ten. Hundred twenty. Hundred thirty. Hundred forty. Hundred fifty. Fifty-seven meters. One meter. One hundred fifty-seven meters. Two meters. Two hundred eighty-seven meters. Three meters.
So what you just saw was two different fluency activities. One was with a second-grade class, and they were practicing counting forward and backwards by ten. And the thumb up was, that was their signal to count up. The closed thumb was to stop, and the thumb down was their signal to count down by whatever that number happened to be. In that example, it was ten. Then you just saw a fourth-grade fluency practice, which was them counting with centimeters and meters. So fluency is more, this type of oral fluency is now more than just fact memorization. Now, they're seeing comparisons between centimeters and meters. Others include time, so they're counting minutes to hours, or they might be counting, starting at the number 283 and counting up by tens. So it's not just on the even numbers. The second component to Eureka Math is application problems. Application problems are word problems that students complete, usually either independently or in small groups. This area really focuses on the standards of mathematical practice, where students are really encouraged to make sense of the problem and persevere in solving them. Most application problems are on concepts that have been previously taught, and now they're applying them in a word problem situation. Students can use a variety of different tools that they know how to use to solve this problem, and they're also encouraged to solve it in a variety of different ways. Students are also encouraged to talk about how they solved it and to construct a viable argument for why their answer is correct. And they're also able to communicate with their classmates and explain how they arrived at their answer. So this particular component is really allowing students to speak more about their mathematical thinking. And on the next three slides, what we've included is just three examples of what a first-grade application problem may look like, a third-grade application problem versus a fifth-grade application problem. So as the grades go up, you see that the application problem is getting progressively harder.
Could you put those back so we can view?
Oh, sure.
Absolutely. They go faster. Absolutely.
Just to note, in those problems, we're really asking students to not only figure out the correct answer, but to create a visual model of their thinking. So that, again, that's a big shift for us to really focus the emphasis on creating a model and a visual model of how they solve their problems.
All right, so the next part will be the concept development, and that begins with the teacher doing a mini lesson where they're teaching the students the concept, and typically 10 to 15 minutes. And then we'll go into the students working together in teams, and they can do a problem set, which is typically a worksheet, or they can also work in teams and hands-on. You see in the picture on the right, they're doing measurement with the yardsticks. On the left, they're doing place value with straws. For example, in my classroom, about two weeks ago, we were doing measurement with grams and kilograms, and students had to go around the classroom using spring scales and digital scales and find things that are relative to a gram to a kilogram, so you can really see real-life examples of math. Students are talking with their teams, building off each other's answers. And again, it's really not just about the answer, but how they reach the answer. So how did they get it? How did they solve it? Pictures, words, a lot of writing. And then at the end, we do a student debrief, and that's where the students from the different teams would share how they reached their answer, which could be a lot different than the other teams, how they compared, what things were different, and then the teacher can finish off anything else that they need to say at the end.
That's the basic structure of a math block. Usually, math blocks are at least one hour. Sometimes, the teachers will do the fluency part of it in a different time of the day, but we're committed to at least a 60-minute block for math. This year, in the beginning of the year, it was probably a little bit longer than that. We are trying to get through one lesson per day. Some success stories. I met with grade-four teachers last week, and one of the grade-four teachers was sharing that he was teaching the area model for multiplication to the students. The child went home, and the next day, he came back and said, "Well, my mom couldn't help me because she didn't learn using the area model." So the teacher had asked, "Well, what did you say to your mom?" She said, "Well, I showed her how to do it, so I taught my mom how to do it using the area model." And sure enough, the next day, the teacher received an email from the parent stating how impressed he was that his daughter was able to explain how to use an area model, how to solve a math problem using an area model. So those are the success stories that we're starting to see now. In the beginning of the year, there was a shift, especially for our fourth and fifth graders. Really, all grade levels really had no background knowledge. Teachers have a better background knowledge. Certainly, the kids are developing that confidence, and it's nice to see some positive things. Up there, we left you the last slide here. Again, I mentioned earlier the website that we have. We are always adding resources to the website. We're tweeting out things for families and parents for questions. We certainly can't answer every single question, but if we can direct families in to the website to hopefully give them an opportunity to get some of their questions answered. I don't know if anyone else had any other success stories they wanted to share.
Well, I can, the different classrooms that I was in, at the very beginning of the year, students would look at word problems and kind of be a little standoffish or a little nervous by them. Now that they're seeing them more on a daily basis, when I walk in and students are doing the application problems, they're not as fearful to try them. They're ready to dig right in, and they feel more comfortable even if they get the wrong answer, because they're at least trying them and trying to persevere in solving them.
And I can say too, just teaching things in a different way, for time this year, what they do is they took the clock, and they actually, Eureka takes it and breaks it down into a number line. And for that, the kids were really able to grasp the concept of the clock as a number line and then put it back together as the clock. So it really helped teach time.
A better way.
And elapsed time. The elapsed time is really good with the number line.
At this point, our presentation is over, but if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Colina.
One question, with any new system, with the brain drain in the summertime, is, that would be my big concern, is that they've learned quite a few concepts, but because they didn't have repetition, that when they go into the following grade, there might be some additional loss, or would you care to comment on that a little bit, please?
I think the way we're teaching now with the conceptual understanding, students have a better understanding. In the past, students may have memorized the algorithm, how to multiply a multi-digit number. However, they have a deeper understanding now. I think it's going to take a few years. We have our fourth graders now, next year, coming to fifth grade with that fourth-grade curriculum. It'll really be nice to see when our kindergarten students move through and have the opportunity to build from kindergarten. I'm sure there'll be a few gaps, but I think the way we're instructing, our students have a better understanding and will be able to retain that knowledge.
Also, with the word problems, I remember in school doing it myself, was it introduced at a later time than you are doing it now, or how does that differ from when I was in school?
I think it's more of an emphasis on that problem-solving ability. We were, traditionally, we've been focused on answer-getting and not necessarily requiring students to, some of our brightest students can tell you what the answer is, but they find it difficult sometimes to really explain their thinking. So that's the biggest shift for us. It's more of an emphasis on it, as well as a focus on a deeper understanding than coverage. I know, teaching, being a fourth-grade teacher, not too long ago, but I guess longer than I want to admit, it was about coverage. Believe it or not, Central Office used to call down to the buildings and say, "Okay, what lesson are you on?" And it kind of bothered me that they would ask us, because I felt like making up a lesson. "I'm on lesson 5.8," and the rest of my colleagues might be on 4, because the emphasis was really on coverage. And it's a shift. It's a shift for us, it's a shift for teachers to really be able to be patient enough to teach students that conceptual understanding rather than just teaching them, "Well, here's how you solve it for this." So looking at our achievement of our students over the, from the beginning of the year, we have seen some great strides students are making, and especially, as you mentioned, to their confidence, their ability to really approach problems, where in the past, maybe they weren't as confident to do that.
Mr. Stansfield.
Thank you. My question, I guess, is a philosophical one. Isn't the important thing that they get the answer?
Yes, they need the answer, but they also need to explain so they can apply that to other problems. So they may get, they may be able to get an answer to one problem, one type of problem, but we want them to be able to be problem solvers. It's interesting, when you look at math instruction in Singapore and Japan, they also have standardized tests, but they don't teach all the standards, all the, they teach their kids to be problem solvers. And that's really, ultimately, we want them to be. We want them to be problem solvers.
So what if they solve the problems in the quote-unquote "bold" way and reach the right answer?
That's okay too. However, we want them to be able to, we want to measure if they're able to explain their thinking as well. So I've had that question. Well, Johnny already knows how to solve it, but can he explain his thinking? So we need to, if we're teaching them to share their thinking, we need to assess that they know how to do that as well. But I won't argue with that. Certainly, if they know how to solve a problem, we want them to get the correct answer.
Okay.
Mr. Holt.
I just want to say thank you for the video presentation to go along with your written text tonight. Seeing the kids in action is, it's good to see that and understand what's actually happening in the classroom. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for having us.
I just have one question. I don't know how many years ago now, we purchased the Everyday Math books. I know this is a program as opposed to a textbook. Are the textbooks any useful now or not? Do you still use them?
No, it's interesting. When, when I was teaching fourth grade, we used Everyday Math. Maybe if you polled the state of Connecticut, the majority of districts were using Everyday Math. After Common Core came out, if you ask districts, it's a very small number of districts that use it. So it was, it was a matter of aligning our instruction to the shifts of the Common Core. So this program certainly does that, in my opinion.
Are there textbooks that would dovetail better with Eureka Math, or is that not necessary?
Eureka right now is our primary resource. However, Singapore Math, there's a lot of similarities to Singapore Math in Eureka. For teachers going through this year, it's great having that resource. And as I think I shared earlier, as they move forward, they're going to know what the assessment asks for and have the confidence to pull out the resources they need based on what their students are doing every day in the classroom. Ultimately, that's what we want teachers to do, to make those decisions on a day-to-day basis. Every lesson ends with an exit slip, so teachers know on a day-to-day basis exactly where their students are, and then they can plan instruction accordingly. As I said earlier, right now, teachers are still going lesson by lesson, and some days, lessons take two or three days to get through. However, I anticipate, as their confidence grows with the program, with the concepts, the skills, the way they're introduced, students, teachers will be able to make those decisions and not have to rely so heavily on one resource. However, they know they can pull multiple resources. That's what we want to try to do, build the capacity of our teachers' confidence and their capacity in math instruction.
Thank you. Mrs. Bush.
I know the Everyday Math was very manipulative, heavy. Are you able to use a lot of the same manipulatives for this program as well?
Yes.
So you didn't have to go out and...
No, there were certain things that we did purchase, but a lot of the materials we already had in hand, so.
Excellent. Good to know. Mrs. Russell, did you?
I like your concept, and I think it's wonderful, because you're not only using this concept for math, but this can go to different subjects and to, you know, this can explore the students in the way they're thinking and how they come up with it. So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much and we're sorry it took two months for you to get here, but we really appreciate it and it's very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work. Move on to consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Mr. Stansfield? Anyone want to call anything? Mr. Plena.
Item B, please.
Which one, D?
B.
Anything else? I thought it was okay. Okay, so we will vote on A, C, D, E, G, H, I, and J. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, Mr. Plena, item B.
I would expect to be on page three, on the last two lines. And it just might be my memory, but I don't recall that we necessarily had to vote on the open choice. I thought it was just informational, informational session. So I didn't think we necessarily were required to do so.
Yeah, I mean, it was an informational session, but I believe we said that we would bring it back as an agenda item on the next meeting.
Right.
So we make a motion on item B. Mr. Plena, is there a second? Mrs. Russell? Any questions or comments on item B? All those in favor? Any of abstaining or opposed or disputed? You abstain. Mr. Cant. And now for item K. This is just a technical. On page 39 of our consent packet, there's a 1, 2, and then underneath it, where it starts, "Board members shall be conducted, board meetings shall be conducted according to..." That should be number 3. And then the next one under that should be number 4. Okay, I don't remember, I just got off there. Mr. Holt?
Motion to approve item K with those minutes.
Is there a second? Mr. Plena? Any comments or concerns? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 3.0, Secretaries Report. Opportunity for Board, information to add or delete agenda items. Anyone who would like to add or delete an item? Can you see now, we'll move on to item 3.2. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to ask about the grant funding Smart Start. I see a letter here. Is any of that going to be addressed further on in the meeting's agenda items?
It is not in this agenda item tonight.
Well, okay, is it part of Mr. Pacaro's report at all?
No, it's not.
Okay, well, then I'd like a brief discussion of it. It can follow at any point if you care where.
Want to make it 6.4 or do you want... Mrs. Beal is here, she may be able to respond. Mrs. Beal, would you be able to answer questions on the Smart Start?
Sure.
All right, we'll make it item 6.4. Well, that's a motion to make it 6.4. Is there a second? Mr. Milton? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, that will be 6.4. Any other additions and deletions to the agenda tonight? Okay, see now, we'll move on to item 3.2. Rockville High School Student Representative Report. They are not here tonight. Item 4.0, Community Forum. Opportunity for comments on agenda items, potential future agenda items or general information provided to the board from citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board that's seated?
My name's Olivia Whitehead, I live at Five Ridge Drive. Good evening, board. It's been a while, a lot has changed since I last spoke to you. I'm now of first year at Simmons. I now consider Boston my home. And I've met so many new people and experienced so many different things. But I want to stay the same. I'm still Batman fanatic. I still have two wonderful parents. And I still come from Rockville and Vernon, and I wouldn't change that. I just wanted to come in and, again, always advocate for the students in schools who always do everything that they can to achieve. And for the students who do everything that they're told, even without being told to do so. You know, no one goes into a class and they're told, "All right, you need, you need to get the N in here." You know, maybe they get that pressure from home or they put it on themselves. But there are students who go above and beyond. And while I still have many friends back at Rockville High School, I just want to remind you of those kids because a lot of times we hear about, you know, the kids who aren't doing well in school, you know, more in passing, our dropout rate, things like that. And sometimes it can be overwhelming. But at the same time, you need to remember that peers of mine, we have, I have a friend at Brown, she was choosing between Stanford and Brown. Stanford paid for her to fly out to California to visit their school. We have another person at Dartmouth, another person at Cornell. You know, we still have impressive students alongside those who do struggle in school. And sometimes it's, we get overlooked. And, you know, a little like support or like congratulate, you know, "You're doing everything that we want you to do and we ask you to do." You know, we have kids who got close to perfect scores on the SATs. That's just insane. And sometimes recognition for those kids or even little incentives like senior privileges, you know, if you're doing well and things like that, those little things make a big difference. You know, it's a reminder that, you know, we may not address you all the time and like point out your hard work and everything that you do, but you know, here's a little something to show that, "Thank you for everything that you do and giving us those high test scores and giving us everything that we really need," you know. And we have so much available at Rockville High School. I mean, I love telling stories at college about Rockville, you know. A lot of people had a different experience than I did. You know, Rockville has a very diverse population and I love that about Rockville. You know, there's just everyone from all different walks of life. And I think that was really valuable for when I went out into the quote-unquote "real world." And, you know, it wasn't a shock factor to me. I was, you know, some people were like, "Wow, there's so many different types of people here." I was like, "No, you know, this is, this is the normal." And so that was reassuring. And there are so many good aspects of Rockville, like the photo program, you know, kind of like Eureka Math. It's not just, you know, memorizing a concept, you know, point-and-shoot photography. You know, you press a button, you get something on your screen. You know, you start from the very basics. You learn about the history of photos and where everything came from. Then you apply that to the darkroom and you still use film and all those chemicals and things that you never thought you'd be able to understand. And now you're doing it for yourself. And then eventually you go into the digital world, but even then, you still have to understand the camera. And you're able to manipulate it in different ways that you wouldn't be able to if you're just a mom at Disney World taking pictures of your kid in front of the castle. And so that's really valuable. Again, the creative writing program, our English department in general offers so much. I mean, all of the departments really at Rockville, they all have their merit. And I'm, especially after going to college, I'm very grateful for my background. You know, I, I am in statistics this semester and math was never my strong suit. I went into statistics this semester and I had taken statistics my senior year. And I knew everything already and I knew tricks on the calculator. And some of the things that we did in our staff class, you know, a lot of it's online now, like the programs and stuff that the college has. But I was able to pull out a graphing calculator and find regression lines and apply everything that I had learned and retained. And so I'm just very grateful for my experiences. Now, statistics is one of my strongest classes. And I know that if I didn't have that background, I wouldn't be able to help other people around me with it like I am now. And, you know, it's just been such a, like, solid foundation. And so I just wanted to come back and say hi to everyone, but also to advocate for those students. You know, I have a lot of friends still in the high school. And sometimes they're like, you know, "We, we achieve so, we strive so hard to achieve." And yet, you know, sometimes they're like, "Well, you know, it's just Rockville, we're just waiting to get out." And I'm like, "No, you know, you have to be in the moment. You have to, like, you can't just look to the future and not be where you are now." You know, take everything in, whether it's good or it's bad or it's just kind of mediocre, just take it in, take note of it. You know, be there, be present because it's going to help you in the long run. And, you know, I've always encouraged my friends, you know, "Look outside of Connecticut for colleges," you know. And, you know, "Look outside, see what's out there." I mean, I always kind of had Boston in mind because I want to visit my sister and fell in love. But at the same time, I know a lot of kids, sometimes they can't look past, you know, Eastern and Central and MCC and UConn. And while those are all fabulous schools, you know, sometimes I have a friend out in Hawaii, Pacific. And, I mean, she lives three houses up the street from me. But I was like, I told her, "You need to look outside." And she ended up applying to no schools in Connecticut. I was like, "Okay, that's a bit much." But, you know, she did what she would needed to do and she is finding herself in other places. And so it's just, I thank you for giving me such a strong background, for allowing me to have a place where I could find myself and where I could see other people and get a real-world experience before I left to go to the real world. And it was an honor serving on the board. I always liked telling board stories too. You know, people get a kick out of it. And I honestly, it has prepared me very much for, again, the real world. And so I thank you and I wanted to come and keep advocating. I may not see you all again for a while, but I did want to come back at least once. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Olivia. Thank you for all the stuff, we appreciate it. And we do appreciate the students who work on it, but maybe we don't show it enough. You probably are, so we're glad you're doing so well in college too. That's wonderful news, so thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? It's a tough act to follow.
Actually, I wasn't going to, but I want to piggyback a little bit on what Olivia said. Lori Pedri, 60 Patricia Drive. I wanted to thank Olivia, actually, for her coming on the diversity of Rockville and how it has prepared her for the real world because that's actually exactly why my kids are in the Vernon schools, because it's, it's all about diversity. And I don't think kids in a lot of districts get that. And the other thing I wanted to say, actually, where she was pointing out the issue with the good kids not always being recognized for doing just what they're supposed to do. That's actually been a frequent complaint that I've heard at Center Road over the years. PBIS, you know, I get the point is the positive reinforcement. And that curbs negative behaviors. However, the programs tend to end up rewarding student, the students who normally don't behave get rewards for behaving. And then the students who are behaving just don't get anything because, oh, you did what you were supposed to do. So the bad students, sorry to call them that, but the students who don't necessarily do what they're supposed to do, you know, they have a goal and they're rewarded for reaching their goal. Whereas the good students who are doing what they're supposed to do don't have a goal and they are not necessarily recognized or rewarded. So it's, I mean, even the students will say that a lot, you know. Center Road has something called Road Runner Riches and that's what the kids get for good behavior. And especially in the later years, third, fourth, fifth grade. If, if you actually look, Center Road has a section of wall outside the nurse's office and they put up pictures of students who have achieved so many Road Runner Riches. And it actually could be like a who's who most wanted. Like, you look at the list and you say, "Problem child, problem child, problem child, problem child." They're all up there because they receive rewards. Whereas the good kids aren't always up there. Sometimes they are, sometimes they're not. So it is something that actually, at every level of our school, could probably be looked at a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for sharing that. Any other comments in the public tonight? All right, we'll move on to item 5.0. 5.1, Appointed and Supervised for Special Education.
Thank you very much. We have restructured in Central Office several of the positions in order to reduce by wanting an administrative position at Central Office. So this year, you know, we had three shared positions. It's very difficult to wear two hats at the same time. And in reality, those three people were probably doing just about two full-time jobs. So one of those people, Mr. Todd Giannzanti, was a .55, so just over half-time guidance counselor at the middle school, which has been his position for several years now. And the other .45, so just under half-time, was a supervisor of special ed at the secondary level, grade six through 12. In that role, he grew over the course of this past year. He was chairing PPTs. He was working with students, working with teachers, doing a number of things. And so when Todd applied for this position, we did informally interview him. And he was the only internal applicant for the position. But we believe we have found the right person for the position in our interviews. Mr. Burt, Mrs. Beal, and I were the panel that interviewed him. So we bring him forward. He would be moving from the teacher ranks to the administrator ranks. And so that would require, a new administrator would require, by your request, a board appointment. And so Mr. Giannzanti is here. Mrs. Beal and Mr. Burt, who are also part of the interview committee, are here. And so I would ask that you appoint him as the special ed supervisor. This will be a K-12, he can wear one hat for next year, which is delightful.
All right, thank you. Mr. Holt.
I'd like to make the motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Mr. Todd Giannzanti as a supervisor of special education as of July 1st, 2015.
Is there a second, Mr. Plena? Do we have any discussion, comments?
Mrs. Arne. I'm not going to support the motion, I'd just like to address why. I don't know Mr. Giannzanti, so my non-supported motion has nothing to do with him or his qualifications or the job he's done. I'm disappointed that for a number of positions and including this one, there were no external postings. That to continue to just, just appoint from within makes me concerned about whether we're really getting the best of the best. That, I know we have excellent staff in Vernon, but when you just keep choosing, you know, big fish from the small pond, how do, how do we know that we're really getting the best and what Vernon needs? So I can't support the, I can't support this because I don't feel that the search was done appropriately. I know that it wasn't done for other positions as well. And when, when we, as a board, agree with Dr. Conway that we need the best of the best, I don't think that, that never looking outside of Vernon really assures me that we're getting the best of the best. Mr. Giannzanti may be that, but there's, there's no process that confirms that for me.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Plena?
I agree a little bit with Ms. Arne that this is an extremely important position. And it is one of the areas where we really need, as she says, the best of the best. And I kind of agree, we do need to look. And Mr. Giannzanti might be the best of the best, but I kind of feel we need to be looking to find the best of the best. We need to find the best talent out there for that position. It is an absolute critical position for us in making sure that we are following all rules and regulations and that we're able to provide the best education for our students in Vernon. So I would agree with that only because, like, we need to make sure that externally, internally, that we're looking in both areas for that position. And I would agree with that.
Mr. Stansfield.
I, I hear my colleagues' reasons and I can't necessarily disagree with them, but I do have the unique position of having been in the room as a parent of Mr. Giannzanti. And I bring that to the table knowing that he has been a really, I'll just say, a bright light in the special education process of Vernon. And I will fully support his, his appointment to this position. I understand the argument and intellectually, I agree with it. But in this case, knowing what I know, I don't necessarily have a problem with agreeing with the appointment.
Mrs. Russell.
I'm going to say ditto with what Mrs. Arne and what Mrs. Vernon said. And I have nothing against Mr. Giannzanti. I don't know him, but I just think it's only fair to, to go internal and external and see what we can get. And he could be the best of the best. We're not knocking him, it's just a procedure. We're not knocking him, it's just a procedure. And I have to go along with these two.
Mr. Kent.
I'm not to disagree with you that have spoken against this, but this is a heck of a time to come up with a process change or preference. I mean, when any search is conducted, the board has every opportunity to say, here's what we would prefer to do on this job or any other job. We'd like to go in-house this time, we'd not like to go in-house this time. We'd like to consider people from outside or not. And that could easily have been really done. The fact that they've chosen someone or whoever really did the work, I didn't, is great. But they could have just as easily sourced outside as inside. And we, this is on us. We tell the superintendent what to do. And if we had decided that we should have gone and considered people outside, we should have said so upfront. Now, they've gone through the process, they've selected someone, and now we're saying, oh, well, we should have gone outside. I mean, where were you upfront? I don't know.
Mrs. Russell.
I'm not familiar anymore with how we conduct this. But I didn't know that we weren't going to go internal and external. And I think with any position that's that important, we should do it with every one of them. I'm just speaking up now for the rest of the positions. I don't think we should only be internal.
Well, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that Dr. Conway did send us an email and asked if there was, it was part of our Friday notes, I believe, and asked if we would like to do a different process. And I don't know who responded or who didn't respond, so.
I have the Friday notes with me and the only question was whether we would like to be considered as part of the interview, as being in on the interviews. We were not asked about the process. And I did make an assumption, I will acknowledge that. But I think when we're told that we're looking for the best, then it wasn't the best in our system, it was the best. So, my first introduction to this was the Friday notes when she said to us that they conducted an interview and that she wanted to formally appoint him. That was it. There was no, the only invitation was would we like to sit in on some of the interviews? Part of, you're welcome to be a part of either or both interviews. And that was for the Director of Teaching and Learning and the Director of Ad-All Ed. It had nothing to do with the Director of Special Education.
Mr. Kent.
But I think that doesn't absolve the board of its ultimate responsibility for setting the standard as to how we would approach it. Whether the superintendent communicated sufficiently to you all, us all, or not, is really irrelevant. We are always in charge of the process. And if Dr. Conway never sent an email or sent 500 emails, it doesn't matter. It's on us. So, here we are. I would just say in the future, we should make it clear what we want to do, whether it's the source for this or any other job. I would always encourage looking outside. We've gone inside before, but it's when we had looked outside and chose to go inside, fine with me. But I think this is a little late in the day to say, I'm not gonna support this because there wasn't, I don't know, maybe somebody was considered from the outside or not. But anyway, here we are. There's apparently a qualified person. And as far as I'm concerned, that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. I think it would be horrific for a candidate to go into position with only half the support of the board if that, I, Mr. Giannzanti, I'm sorry. I'm going to withdraw my recommendation publicly at this point. And we will advertise and do the full search. And I know that that is, we're in the middle of the motion. I would like to have permission to do that, though. I apologize, Mr. Giannzanti.
I'm not sure. Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Well, Mary, in all due respect, the argument here is process, not person. And I don't feel that, in my opinion, that the board is not fully supporting this person. What they're saying is they would have preferred a different process, but that doesn't mean that the board wouldn't stand behind the gentleman.
Mr. Stansel, you had your hand up? Or, no, okay, sorry.
I would prefer that Mr. Kent not speak for me, when rested in the board, that I am not supporting the person because I don't know that he is the best qualified. So, to me, the process should have been different. It's not standing, it's not objecting to the person and the, it's not objecting only to the process. It's saying that we need to change our process so that we're sure that we do have the right person.
All right. Dr. Conway has just withdrawn her recommendation.
That doesn't change the motion.
But we do have a motion on the floor. So, I think we need to vote on that motion. Or if we want to give someone else a job. Mr. Hall.
I do not wish to remove my motion. I wish to keep the motion on the table or on the floor.
I wish to keep my support for the second one.
Okay, how can you maintain a motion when the superintendent has withdrawn the recommendation? Doesn't make sense to me. There is no recommendation, so there should be, there's nothing to motion for.
Maybe the board would like to go forward with that person as the, in that position.
Despite her withdrawal?
By law, the board can only hire someone who's been recommended by the superintendent. And that's why I don't recommend one person for her. And so, Ms. Arnn is correct, if there is no recommendation, I would do it for the process and certainly not the person. I believe Mr. Giannzanti is the right person for the job.
So, regardless rules.
I didn't hear the superintendent. Did she just say?
She just withdrew her recommendation by law.
Yeah, but I just heard her say he's the right person for the job.
I do believe he's the right person for the job. I would withdraw his, my recommendation at this point only because I feel he needs the support of the whole board. And that's very important for any administrator in this district. And right now, I do not feel he has the support of the whole board for whatever reason.
Mr. Stansel.
Okay, so we've really made a hatch out of this one. My, I'm sorry, Mrs. Arnn, yes, yes. I don't, I question whether you can withdraw your recommendation after we've already made a motion to accept the recommendation. That's a little shaky to me. I understand your logic. I strongly urge my colleagues, if they have problems with the process, since we had this agenda as of, I believe, Thursday, that we perhaps should have had, you know, a motion to go into executive session before we had this particular discussion. I think that would have been a more appropriate place to have this conversation. And I feel very bad that this conversation was done in public. And I hope that next time, we would make such a motion. Thank you.
Well, if it's, we can't, if you're not recommending, and it's time, we can't vote on anything because there is no recommendation, is that correct? Mr. Hall.
I have to withdraw my motion. At least on the law. And thank you for very being. Well, let Terry now tell us that.
The motion has been withdrawn. Mr. Kent. Second, I'm sorry.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, voice, I'm sorry. Okay.
The hiring of individuals does not necessarily require a unanimous vote. And in many boards of it, different positions are filled by a split vote, sometimes with abstentions. And it's been our tradition, more often than not, to have unanimous votes, which is always very nice, but it is not essential. And especially in this case, when I think our responsibilities as a group have not been adhered to the way they might have been. And now, in the unfortunate case that the superintendent feels it's necessary to withdraw her recommendation to what, to, for a person who might very well be an excellent choice. But I don't know why we feel it's absolutely necessary that there be an unanimous vote. And this is very regretful.
Yes, well, we will open it up to external candidates and go from there. Mrs. Arnn.
Could I request that the positions that are open, the Director of Teaching and Learning, Director of Ad-All Ed, the Director of Pupil Personnel, that all of that should be open to external candidates as well so that the next name, the names that are brought to us, we can be assured that you are presenting the best of the best to us.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? There was discussion, I'm sorry. All right, all those in favor? Motion does not carry. Okay. I'm sorry, it's all opposed, that was my fault. All those opposed to that motion, is that a? I'm standing. Mr. Stansel is the right one. Okay, we'll move on to item 5.2, which is the acceptance of the superintendent's retirement. Tony, Mr. Stansel.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Dr. Mary K. Conway, Superintendent for Vernon Public Schools, effective October 1st, 2015.
Is there a second? Um, concerns? I'd just like to say that I thank Dr. Conway for her years of service here. I think she's brought us a long way and hopefully we can find someone who will continue and bring us even further. I do regret this retirement personally. And I think Trish does too. Mr. Hall.
I would echo those comments as well.
Okay, anyone else? Mrs. Russell.
With the superintendent's search, is it possible that we can go internal and external? Can I, should I be there as a motion?
All those in favor, we're accepting Dr. Conway's designation. All right, we'll move on to item 6.1. 6.1, generalities, 6.1, open choice program seats.
It is that time of year when we receive word from the State Department that there are students who have chosen Vernon. Either as their first, second, and I think they actually go to fifth choice. There are approximately 297 Harvard students who have chosen open choice seats in various districts around the state. Right now, we have five students. We have one in the ninth grade, we have one in the fifth grade, and we have three in the fourth grade. So, a total of five students. So, we expect that all five will be with us next year. And so I would ask that you approve any number of seats, additional seats, for the open choice program to add students to those five.
I have a question. This chart, I have a little trouble understanding. Are any siblings of current students that we have now, are any siblings applying?
I do not think we have any current siblings. There are siblings among the students who have chosen. So, we at Center Road School, we have no children at Center Road School. We only have, and we have none at Vernon Center Road School. We have four at Lake and one at Rockville High School. And so, I think that just tells us that we have other.
So, the current students that we have, they have no younger siblings?
I don't think they're of a layer, no.
Anyone? Mr. Stansel.
I would like to make a motion that the Vernon Board of Education decline to enroll any additional open choice students for the 2015-2016 school year.
Is there a second, Mrs. Bush?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Hall.
I agree with the initial concept of the motion, that we decline at this point in time. But the question I have for the board is, do we leave our choices, or leave it open till after budget season, after we're set with our budget? Because there's an opportunity to get additional dollars into this town through some additional students if we need to. And if things continue to go south with our budget, there's the opportunity of at least bringing kids into the younger grades like we've done in the past. And there's potentially get dollars associated with those students that can help our class, you know, without, you know, screwing up our class sizes and whatnot, selectively taking students in. We could potentially get some additional dollars into this town. Just something to keep in mind. So, if we decline altogether, we lose that.
Mr. Stansel.
I wouldn't be opposed to an amendment, you know, stating that that is a choice for now that we can choose to revisit after budget season. My objections are probably not going to be overcome by, you know, taking four or five students and getting $22,000, $23,000 out of it. But certainly, I don't have any problem if you'd like to make that a friendly amendment.
I'd get it as a friendly amendment, I'd like to have it as, leave it open.
Second or a group? Yes? All right, Mrs. Russell.
I agree with Mr. Hall, what he said was additional monies. But I also think that my priority is Vernon students. But it's also all students. And if we give some of them the opportunity to be in our school system, they know what we're all about and I'm very proud of what we're trying to do with our school system. I would like to support it.
I agree conceptually with Mr. Hall. But the problem that I have is we have no control over the students that we get. So, they could come to us and be very costly to Vernon. And I know that there are dollars built in, I understand that. But I worry about the impact that those students would have.
Mr. Hall.
Just to relate that, we know that we pay a certain amount of special ed. After that, it goes back to the sending district after we pay our share, you know, which is a small compared to if there was a student from Vernon eating services. So, I'm not afraid of that. And once we take these kids in, as we've seen with the kids that we've taken in before, they are Vernon kids and they graduate as Vernon kids. And, you know, I think, you know, for the most part, the track record for the kids that we have they have been very good. And if we, you know, need something to help balance things out, I think we need to leave the option on the table. It is a viable option. And I say, I'm not afraid of like special ed costs because, again, that will be borne by the sending district.
Mrs. Russell.
I just want to say ditto on what Mr. Hall has said. It will be capped and I'm not afraid to do that. The second question that I wanted to ask was, Dr. Conway said we need some additional seats. Are we voting on additional seats or just the five?
Sorry, but we have five students right now. They're here, the five students that we have. So, I just ask for, in general, any additional. So I just ask for, in general, any additional seats, as I'm required to ask you to have.
And it's five students, as far as you know.
You could add thirty, you could add a hundred, you could add five, you could add ten, it's really up to the board what you would want to do, if you want to add.
Would it be too late to add, if we revisited this after budget season to accept it, do they need to know sooner rather than later?
Certainly sooner rather than later would be appropriate and helpful. I don't know if the students will already have a situation if the board changes their mind later, but certainly that's worth asking at that point if the board so chooses.
So what you're saying is we can't bring this back? We will bring it back if we want it.
Say after the budget motion? After the budget?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Stansfield.
Well, it says will bring it back, it's only an option. I don't think the friendly amendment was necessary, because the option is always there anyway. But I don't want to vote against it because of the friendly amendment. I want the main motion to pass, so I will support the main motion.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, which is, see if I have this right, Trish, decline, the motion is to decline to enroll any additional open choice students via friendly amendment, leaving an option open for deliberation after the budget season. All right, all those in favor? Ms. Anderson. All right, item 6.2, our Budget Committee Report.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the board. Firstly, you may notice that the finance and business report this evening is a little bit lighter than usual. This is following some guidance that we were following from our House District work with the board. And so, just very briefly, you'll notice that this will continue. There will be four standard exhibits with all future business and financial reports, the executive summary of account balances, which provides full transparency and access to all of our account balances, local, grant, student activity account, capital nonrecurring and so forth, a year-to-date budget summary, budget transfer amendment requests, those are informational transfers, as well as action items for the board in the form of amendments, and then a running total summary of all budget transfers and amendments to date for the current fiscal year. Additional exhibits will be added to inform the board to take action on. For this evening's report, I'll just hit the highlights that we covered in more detail of the Finance Committee. If I can draw your attention to the year-to-date budget summary and the executive summary of account balances. One note that I'd like to share with the board is that we have received our first of two payments from the State Department of Education for our special education excess costs. That first payment was in the amount of $841,347, as noted in the executive summary. When we transfer our current expenses from our special education tuition line items, which you'll notice is negative, as expected, at this time in the fiscal year from the year-to-date budget report, that leaves us with a need for an additional $192,000. Based on the guidance from the State Department of Education, our expected revenue for the second filed payment, originally, if you recall from the previous finance packet, they had provided us with an 87% reimbursement rate, which we know we're not going to hit, and they actually put that in the memo. But that was based on their current figures of all reporting districts, which there were large districts that did not report. When those numbers come in, and those larger districts report their needs, that number is expected to go down. And so it's our projection at this point, pending any additional students come in, coming into district, that we are likely going to break close to even on our special education costs. So we'll continue to monitor that closely, but additional students coming into district with special education tuition needs, obviously something that we're going to continue to watch closely. Also, I'd like to draw your attention to budget transfer amendment request. There is an addendum that I passed out this evening with a budget transfer. Again, normally, budget transfers are something that we would process internal, but we felt that this was one that we wanted to bring to the board, and there is a budget amendment request in there that through the Finance Committee that we'd get the board to take action on this evening. So if I can draw your attention to the addendum. The budget transfer is for funds in the amount of $3,475 from one Rockville High School account to another Rockville High School account to support the operations for putting out a musical. And this is something that Mr. Rocket is championing in the school. Some activity has already occurred in this direction, but we felt at this point in time this is an unbudgeted expense, and we wanted to bring it to the board for discussion and further action before we went ahead and approved the transfer. Big picture, Mr. Rocket has prepared a budget with a projected need of about $16,000 to put on this production this year. There is a projected revenue from ad sales, ticket sales, fundraising of about $8,000. This transfer would satisfy half of the remaining balance of about $8,000. So $34,75 is almost half of the remaining balance, and then we'd have to come back and identify additional funds at a later date to make up the other $4,000 change to get us to the projected budget. I do need to advise you that, as your finance officer, if we don't, we're not successful in our fundraising, which I think we will be to a degree, there could be more exposure for the board. So these are unbudgeted expenses, and we had some discussion in our Finance Committee, and I believe the direction that we want, that is have Mr. Rocket come back and present to the board his intentions for this production and benefits and so forth.
Mr. Holt.
Yes, I'd like to make that in the form of motion, that we have Mr. Rocket come and present on this and give us the opportunity to ask the appropriate questions. He lists out some costs on the document that he presented us, and give the board the opportunity to ask questions and decide what we want to do. $16,000 is in large amounts.
Mr. Plante? Can you have questions, comments, discussion? Mrs. Bush?
I have just not given a copy of that. I don't have one. I don't think, Mrs. Buchanan, has one either.
Any other, if you want time to read that first? Could we add to that motion that Mr. Rocket comes during next board meeting, because I think he wants to know about this, how this settled.
I made that a friendly amendment, but it's set next board meeting on the point third.
Thank you, Mr. Holt.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? All those, oh, sorry, Mr. Holt.
Yes, Michael, Exhibit B.
No, wait, we've got a motion on the floor.
Four.
To have Mr. Rocket come back and give a presentation of his... All those in favor?
Michael, Exhibit B. There are some accounts that I observed that they're large dollar amounts, but they're also in percentages of amounts originally budgeted, and they're relatively low. Give you an example. On page one of Exhibit B, there's $43,000 and change, about halfway down to page 54% of that account. It's in lieu of medical insurance. So at this stage of the year, this is dated March 4th, I believe, 30. At this stage of the year, if there's 54% of the funding available in this and some other accounts, I would think that we aren't going to spend all of that. Now, if this were coaches' salaries, I wouldn't bring it up, because I'm sure we're going to go through coaches' salaries briskly at this time of year. But I'll take you down to one that's a little easier to digest. There's $230,000 available, 42% of the funding is, and it's in substitute teachers now. The original request was for $400,000, but there's over half of it is still, so we couldn't possibly go through all of that funding, and that's a big chunk of change there. So do you see an opportunity for us to, at the end of the fiscal year, have some, a substantial fund left over, amount of funds left over, in substitute teacher account? And a few others, by the way, on the following page. But let's just talk about the substitute one for now. What's your feeling?
Through you, Madam Chair. On both of those accounts that you highlighted, we make payments in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. Specifically on the substitute teachers, even though that's something, an account we would frequently hit throughout the year, we don't usually see the biggest spike until the fourth quarter. You know, any account balances that we have, we'll bring that back to the board at the end of the fiscal year, when we start closing out the fiscal year, and we do that typically in April, so that we can report back to the board with enough time, so that if we didn't need to make any budget transfers or amendments to make up any deficits in other accounts, we would have ample time to do that.
Well, if you say so. I mean, on the next page, on instructional services, there's $95,000 remaining, on repair of instructional equipment, $26,000. There's $10,000 in, let's go by that one, there's $23,000 in employee travel, they'd have to be traveling a whole lot to spend $23,000, and $67,000 in, I'll work from the bottom, reimbursement private agencies. Anyway, and they have not, that would appear to be, in each of those, an opportunity for us to end up in the black in a substantial amount. What's your feeling?
Through you, Madam Chair. In those accounts, and we'll continue to look at them closely, but we also have accounts that are negative. We have a negative $90,000 line item in the town pension account that we have to satisfy. So again, when we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, when we see where our actual expenses are going to be, we'd likely be coming back to the board to make transfers and amendments, to make up ground on some of the other accounts that are in a deficit situation.
Well, in fairness, there do not, there does not appear to be that many in the negatives, such that I would raise this question in the first place. It seems like those in the positive and the percentage available really outweigh, to a large extent, those in the negative. And that's why the nature of the question. $133,000 in magnet tuition special ed, that's, we're expecting not that much, I would think, to come in at the end of the year. Yes?
Yeah. That's what we budgeted for, Mr. Campbell, that's what we're going to do. We wanted to touch base with us.
Thank you for the opportunity to respond. We do anticipate approximately that amount. We had to kind of count hard for it to get the bills, and my secretary is going one by one through those bills and correcting any discrepancies, multiples that we've found so far. So the amount might be slightly less than that, that was just an update I got today. But it is going to be a significant amount of money.
All right, thank you. If we may, Madam Chair, go back to the addendum for the budget amendment to the Finance Committee to request the board to take approval, make approval, a motion for approval for the transfer amendment of funds in special education account to K4 pre-K meals. They were not budgeted for this year. In having a conversation with Mrs. Beale as a follow-up to our Finance Committee, the program has grown, the expenses have grown accordingly. In years past, apparently, some of these costs were absorbed in our food and nutrition services program, so they were off-budget, but they need to be accounted for appropriately. So I would ask the board to make that motion for approval, and also with the understanding that next year it's already been budgeted in the fiscal year 2016 budget, so this would be for this year only.
Mr. Holt.
Make that a motion to go transfer from OpTACU 51114 to 56900, the $15,000 for...
Second, Mr. Plante? Questions, concerns, comments?
I'm just wondering how it comes out of personnel. Is it, was that a, how to say it, not budgeted correctly, or is there a change in personnel?
Changes in personnel can be seen when staff are leave our employment and other people are hired, or there may be a gap in services, or staff that may have had unpaid leave, if they, for example, were on FMLA and were out for part of that time without pay. So that's where that money has come from.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on this portion? All those in favor? Ms. Anderson.
Next item that I'd like to highlight briefly is the fiscal year 2016 budget, to bring to the board's attention, that we have received notification on three line items. First is our general liability insurance. We're expecting a 10% increase in that line item for the town and the Board of Education, and we pleased to report that our insurance broker, working with our insurance carrier and underwriters, and primarily due to various risk management activities, we were able to receive a 0% increase there. So that would mean close to $13,000 savings for next year's budget in our general liability line item. However, our workers' compensation costs have gone up, primarily due to one large claim, to the tune of about $70,000 in additional funding that we would be needing to pay next year into the self-funded account at the town. And we were also informed that life insurance premium costs, if we stay with the current carrier, would also go up substantially, to the tune of somewhere between $50,000 and $70,000. So the direction on the life insurance that we provided our brokers was that we're going to put that out to bid, and see if we can find a better premium rate. But on the workers' comp, I think that's going to be an actual cost that we have to absorb for next year's budget. So when, and if we open up the budget, that is, those are adjustments that we will need to revisit and make to our next year's budget. The last item that I'd be glad to open up for questions is some quick highlights on the Governor's proposed budget. We discussed in the Finance Committee, from a fiscal impact standpoint, if the budget were proceed in its current form, there were three items from a revenue standpoint for the State Department of Ed that I shared with the Finance Committee. The first is that the education cost share in the Governor's proposed budget is capped for fiscal years 15 and 16 at the current fiscal year's level. Same holds true for the excess cost for special education, and same holds true for regular transportation. What does that mean for us, as far as an impact? As far as excess costs, I would strongly urge the board, unless the budget changes favorably, puts more money in the account, raises the cap level, that we stay at our 70% reimbursement rate, which is what we'll be budgeting for for next year.
And then, do you have any questions for Mr. Farrow? Okay, thank you very much. Move on to item 6.3, Discussion of 2015-16 Proposed Budget.
Thank you. Finance Committee members received a letter that I received on 5/6 this evening. I put it in your place as well. This is a letter from Mayor Champagne. He has indicated that he is reducing the board's budget by $650,000. He has also made a few suggestions as to where some of that funding might be found by the board. Dental insurance, he's suggesting that that could possibly go down by about $21,000. Prescription drugs, as you recall, we were self-funded for prescription drugs. As people move over to the HSA, we are now fully funded, and so that can be decreased significantly. He's suggesting $429,000 reduction in that line item. At that point, he also is suggesting that the kindergarten teachers, the last two and a half positions that the board has put in the local budget, that there is a possibility of moving that back to the Alliance Grant. The word we have, as you know, is that the Alliance Grant, the funding for the Alliance Grant that we receive in year... grant that we receive in year five, so the year after next, will, that amount will be put into ECS, to education cost share, in the following year, so in FY18. And so the governor, the mayor, excuse me, is suggesting that the board put those kindergarten positions back into the grant, that would be two and a half positions. That savings is about $168,000, so that brings that to 618 of the 650. So the board would have to revisit that list if you wish. That, the $650,000 increase to a 1.79%, by the way, it's just, it's $900,000.
Mr. Wolf?
I'd like to make a motion that the board put on the calendar a special meeting at 6 o'clock on the 23rd of March, prior to our regular board meeting, one-hour budget workshop, where we can take up these items for consideration, plus the $70,000 workers' comp issue that Mr. Carleman is aware of this evening, and so that we have time to look over the prior list that we provided by administration for consideration, and come back to, you know, at that time, prepare to take action prior to going to town council.
Just a second. Any comments, discussion, concerns? Mr. Kemp?
I'm fine with the town dean. I'd just like to ask Mr. Percaro, these dollar amounts for dental, prescription, and I guess the $168,000, do you concur with the figures?
Three Madam Chair, for the dental insurance and the prescription drugs, yes. We work collaboratively with the town finance office, looking at the prescription drug account in particular, at our actual experience, the town's account balance, and our budgeting, and so yes, I would support those costs at those levels.
But that's only two. How about the third one?
About three Madam Chair, as far as the funding, I think it's more about the concept of.
Right, but would you agree with the $168,000, plus or minus?
The amount for those positions?
Yes.
Any other questions on this? Okay, all those in favor of having a budget workshop at 6 o'clock on 3/23 before our regular board meeting? Mr. Adams. I'll move on to item 6.4, Smart Start Grant. Okay, Mr. Kemp, go ahead with this to the agenda, or do you have a, Mrs. Beal?
Well, Patty, obviously, we've forgotten the word that we didn't want here, but let's start from the positive. What are we going to do to get it done next time?
I have, I have had a conversation already with the State Department of Education grant coordinator, and so we had a verbal conversation just about setting for a meeting in April. She's going to be on leave for a little while. I had, I had reported to the board, I had had a conversation with her previously, and this was a follow-up conversation, and so she said she'd be happy, and that's what the State Department is going to do with other districts like Vernon, who did not receive funding the first time around, is have meetings to kind of flesh out the grant and any ways that we can improve our grant application. Have not received the rating on the grant application yet, so I'm not sure what the state agreed or disagreed with the application. So we've had an initial conversation. I have a tentative April date set up to meet with her. She would like to come out and meet here, and we can sit down and review that.
So you expect in April to find out specifically why we weren't awarded? Is that right?
I'm hoping that she's going to provide specific information. I think that she will. I'm not sure what their procedure is, but she certainly will review the writing or the, you know, any kind of advice that she could give me for drafting the next round of grants.
Well, next to the last paragraph in the letter, it says, Andrea, referring to her, "We'll be able to help identify areas of strengths and weaknesses in your application to assist you in future applications." So coming out of that meeting, I would hope that we understand clearly what it is that we need to, I don't know the answers, but you said you had conversations previously. Didn't they give you some indication as to what we needed to do in those initial conversations?
So my initial conversation, so if I back up a little bit and explain the timeframe when I created the application for this, we did decide sort of toward the end of the window, there was not a long window for application, but we did decide toward the end of that window to actually make an application. We created an application, and then in the really 11th hour, 12th hour, we changed the application to include a community-based programming. And so I believe that in that 11th hour, when we were creating and drafting that and making contact about setting up this opportunity, there were questions that I did not have the information about, and so when we wrote, when I wrote the grant and presented that, I think there were things in the grant that we were not allowed to do. So for example, we talked about capital improvement in a community setting. That was not permitted, and so we likely got marked down on that. And so those are things that I think that we'll have conversations about, and as we move forward and reapply for that grant, I think we may be able to plan differently. We may be able to use the preschool development grant more freely in the community setting and use the Smart Start Grant in district. So I think, you know, if we had to do it all over again, we might swap that and develop the preschool, that preschool grant in the community settings, and we might have been more successful with the Smart Start in district. So that's one of the things that I might anticipate hearing from them. I'm not sure what else, but I certainly will share that with you when we get our, any specific information she provides.
All right, well, thank you for that. I'm concerned that we didn't receive this grant, but I'm also concerned about the pending answer regarding the technology grant. I mean, there's a substantial amount, this is not your piece. There's a $300,000 grant that we are very much hoping to receive, and that is, this is March, we were expecting to hear that in April, but this coming from the same state of Connecticut, I guess I'm going to ask Michael, do you feel as confident as you did earlier about us receiving the technology grant? Three Madam Chair, Mr. Burton?
To the chair. We feel very good about this grant. We went through the rubric that was provided to us, and we made sure that we hit all the major points that were required of the grants. It's just a matter of how much we believe we'll get out of that grant.
Well, I mean, the state has put several million up in play. We were after $300,000. Are you modifying a $300,000 expectation, or you still hang in there with $300,000?
As you recall from the, it was in the board packet, I forget which Monday it is now, but it was, I believe, for $208,000. Primary reason for that is because we do have a matching portion to that grant of local responsibility, and we felt it's fiscally responsible to not go for that $300,000. That would have increased the burden on the board's local portion. So we reduced that much, and we still feel that we can meet the needs of the district with that reduced amount.
All right, thank you. I'm not so naive to think that some of this isn't political. I mean, if you look at the towns that received this funding, Coventry's one of them, and Representative Akron happens to be on the Education Committee, and it's a small miracle that Coventry won this award and we didn't. So I would hope our state representatives will try to help us bring home the dollars the way they should.
Any other questions on the Smart Start? Okay, item 7.0, do you have an updated Board of Education calendar? Does anybody have anything on calendar? Item 8.0, opportunities for expressions from the press on agenda items. Have any questions there? All right, nothing left. All those in favor?